The meeting will come to order. The time is now 5:31 PM on, sorry, Monday, November 20th, 2023. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I'm an African American man wearing a gray sweater. I will now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Carla Sims.
Present.
Cicely.
Present.
Chase. Cora. Gretchen.
Present.
Hector. Julianne. Kimber. Natalie. We have a quorum, a quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at opengovoffice@dc.gov. Notice the meeting was posted in the DC Register, on the Commission's website, dcrts.dc.gov, and on the DC Office of Open Government's Central Meetings Calendar at opend-DC.gov. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. A number of us are at the Commission's office building in Washington DC at 200 I Street Southeast, and a few are joining remotely using the Cisco Webex Virtual Meeting Platform. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I will now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived in this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and deference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nakachchank and the Piscataway people. We pay respects to the elders past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Hearing no objection, the agenda stands as adopted. So, good evening and welcome to everyone. We have some additional hires at the Commission. Director Myers will speak more about them in his report a little later. I do want to take the opportunity now, on behalf of my fellow commissioners, to congratulate the new staff on being selected, express our appreciation for choosing to bring us your talents and skills, and welcome you to this agency. We look forward to working with you. Moving on to our public comment portion. We have a few individuals signed up for public comment this evening. The Commission welcomes your comments. They are very important to us. Please note the comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be engaging into dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda items for you, the public, to inform us, the Commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff will be glad to follow up via email. When I call your name, you may begin your comments. Teddy Agori from Trippens Care Inc., not here yet? Oh. Not in my notes. So, as we do at all our meetings, we want to bring art into the meeting. So, we have an artist presenting to us today. So, uh... Oh, Jarvis Campbell from Home Rule Festival, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Director Myers. Appreciate the opportunity. If it's okay, would like to share my screen. Can I get some help with that on your end?
Let's try to share.
Yep. Do you see my screen? Let me know when you do.
We do. Well, we see you.
Well, thank you again.
We see you, but I don't know if we see our screen yet.
Okay. So, what about now? I apologize.
All right.
I can't hear you. Say that again?
We just see you. We don't see your screen yet.
Okay, I'm not sure why not. Okay. Have you guys, forgive me, have you given me approval on your end to share my screen?
Yes, they've given you approval. Travis, can you hear?
Yes, I can.
Uh, click the share button. Click the button, share. It'll let you take your... You'll have your... There's a second click you have to choose.
Yep, I thought I did that. I'm not... I apologize, I'm not sure why, why it's not working. Technology.
Don't you love technology?
Of course. Of course. Well, uh, given, given the lack of that, why don't we go ahead and get started? And, uh, again, I apologize. I will, without the benefit of having my slides, I will be as energetic and as excited as I can be, uh, given without that. So, I don't want to take up too much of your time. Uh, I am the Director of the Home Rule Music and Film Preservation Foundation. Uh, we've been established for three years. And again, because of the community support, uh, the business support, uh, the support from the city government and commission like this, we're really excited about where we're headed with the festival. Uh, if I can just take a step back and say that I'm an artist, I'm a filmmaker. Uh, more importantly, I think I'm a father and, and a husband, uh, but I'm someone who's committed to the development of, of, and the growth of my community, uh, and specifically Ward Four and the work that we do on Kennedy Street. Uh, and I'm really excited about where we're headed. So, again, thank you for that and for allowing me to, uh, to continue with. So, with that being said, uh, the Home Rule Music Festival has been in existence now for three years, and we've received some tremendous support. Uh, the mission of, of, of our foundation, as well as our festival, is really to promote, support, and preserve DC music and film through performance, education, and advocacy. Uh, we partner with organizations who share our community values and who want to bring, uh, I think, uh, free music experiences, not just to downtown and to shiny new, uh, wharf and to, uh, some of the parks down there, but really to some of the various neighborhoods throughout DC. And I really speak about, I think, a void that we're filling in just a minute. Again, our primary objective is really to engage and support our community with the lens of music and film. Uh, we've had some major accomplishments in just a few years. Uh, two documentaries produced by our, our, our foundation have been funded. Uh, there's an award-winning documentary on, on Blackfire Records. It's now in PBS, uh, thanks to our friends at WHUT. Uh, we produced three seasons of an outdoor film series at the Parks at Walter Reed and at Lincoln's Cottage. Uh, and again, uh, two seasons, two years of an amazing, uh, music festival celebrating jazz and go-go music. Uh, and the attendance has grown each and every year, and really, the community support has, has really, uh, kind of, uh, been amazing. Uh, so if I can talk about the funding support, uh, we've received some amazing funding support through this commission for this past year. Uh, we received funding in the amount of $3,500, uh, which went directly to support our production expenses for the festival. This year, we applied for the grant and received, uh, $14,000 in, in, in funding. Uh, and again, that is for our 2024 music festival, so our upcoming event. And again, really excited about how that positions us and allows us to really grow and do some of the things that we really haven't allowed us to. Uh, we've recently partnered, uh, and hosted an event with Fran Vilma, uh, a recipient of a, of a grant from this commission. Uh, and we hosted a wonderful, uh, jazz orchestra on Kennedy Street. Uh, and again, uh, the commitment of, of, of our organization and the community, uh, I, I think it's, it's, it's really there, and I'm really pleased. Uh, we're really excited about the growth of the festival. Uh, it is, uh, essentially more than just a festival, if I can say that. Our main day is, is an outdoor event. It's family-friendly. Uh, we obviously have music and DJs, but, uh, but there's art and, and there's a kids' village with activities and games and arts and crafts. Uh, there's a merchandise area where, where local food and merchandise vendors are able to, uh, to, to show off their good work. Uh, but again, more importantly, the energy and the vibe that we create. And, and again, we're filling a void. Uh, a void that, that, that we argue is important in Ward Four, uh, with the lack of, 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 of music venues, with Carter Baron being closed. Uh, we really think and know, uh, that the work that we're doing, uh, is, is making a strong and deniable impact. Uh, suggestions for, uh, this commission and, and for our director? Uh, I, I would argue that there needs to be more support for neighborhood arts programs, projects, and events. And while, uh, there is, uh, funding for, for the, the major events throughout the city, uh, I think the work that is being done by many of my colleagues in the neighborhood, uh, throughout the city is, is just as important and arguably equally as important. Uh, I attended and, and had a wonderful time at, uh, your reception the other night at the Eaton Hotel. Uh, it was crowded, there was a line out the door. Uh, it was hard to move, and so I would argue that gatherings and receptions uh, among members of the arts community is, is really important. And, uh, as a leader, uh, in, in this area, I would argue that, uh, the Commission can and perhaps should do more to really bring us together. Uh, I, I think that was so impactful and so powerful. Uh, if I can say this, we're very grateful, uh, for the support that we've received. Uh, as I mentioned before, uh, it's, it's really helped us tremendously. Uh, with that being said, uh, a more streamlined grant application, uh, would be helpful, uh, with less, uh, financial, uh, mandatory documents for the organizations. And, and I think there were 15 mandatory documents. Uh, I think six or seven of them, uh, were related to organizations. We're a small, very nimble organization, uh, very effective in the work that we do. Uh, and, uh, frankly, at one point, uh, those 15 mandatory documents were very intimidating. Uh, and even though we got through it and, uh, frankly, uh, that intimidation, I would argue perhaps scares many organizations who do some good work, uh, but for whatever reason, aren't able to, to meet that, uh, that criteria for the grant application. Uh, happy to stop there and, and take any questions. Uh, but again, thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for the continued support, and I look forward to working, uh, with the Commission, uh, in the future as well.
Well, thank you. Thank you. And we love supporting organizations like yourselves and activities like the activity you drive. I may have missed this, but has the date been set for 2024?
Uh, that is correct. It's, forgive me, I, I didn't, I didn't reference it. It was in our presentation, Saturday, June the 22nd, uh, 2024, at the Parks at Walter Reed.
Saturday, June 22nd, 2024. That's great, great. Uh, we hear you loud and clear on streamlining applications, and we have made progress significantly from initially, but in the spirit of a continuous improvement, we will keep working on getting that so that it is not intimidating to people who want to apply for grants. And the notion of receptions, we are excited over the reaction we got to the reception we had. We intend to have more. We now have staff that can help us with events like this, so look forward to more. But I can't guarantee the lines won't still be out the door.
Well, I hope they will be. I think that just shows the, the need of, of the good work.
We do too. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So now I'll go to public comments. Sorry about having missed the, that in my notes. Um, Teddy Agori from Trippens Care Inc., are you with us? Lynn Dyson from Multimedia Training Institute. Leoli, who is a fellowship grantee.
Yes, I'm here, sir.
Great.
Um, I just want to keep it short and sweet. This is my first time I've actually ever won anything since high school. Um, and being a, um, following into my, uh, passion of going through art and trying to navigate through the reasons of what I'm doing or why I'm doing it, and all the pushback from obviously years of, um, having to find your own discipline. It's really just nice to have something like this where it makes me emotional to say thank you so much for even... Now, I didn't even know these kind of programs existed, let alone, um, the opportunities that, um, have opened up for me. Uh, it gives me a lot of pleasure and a lot of faith to just like, keep on doing what I'm trying to do. And I've, with the representatives or the, um, the, uh, anyone that I've been talking to within the program has been such a great support system because of the ideas that they're coming up with, the things that they're doing. And though I know it's a very small team, and as I can see, as I'm learning, you know, you're developing and getting bigger. And through all the day-to-day, you know, tasks and duties, I could only imagine how overwhelming it could be. So, on the other side of that, I just wanted to say thank you for just giving us an opportunity for anyone that has, um, puts in the work and effort to let artists become artists or artists who want to become artists find a way to team up with other people that are talented and creative as the city is.
Good, well, thank you. And thank you for applying. We exist because you exist. And the notion of not knowing about these sort of opportunities, we're working very hard to make sure that everyone at least understands what the opportunity might be and will apply and be as prepared as possible. So, so thank you, congrats. And we'll get your comments. Thank you. Uh, I think we go on, well, has Mr. Agori or Lynn Dyson arrived yet? Good. So, we're going to the director's report.
Good afternoon. I am a African American man wearing a gray jacket and a black, uh, turtleneck bald. Uh, and, uh, Jarvis, I want to start by saying that, uh, if anyone's not been by HR records to, uh, grab a couple of records, just, uh, limit the amount of money you bring with you because you'll spend all of it while you're in there. They've got some great records there. Um, I want to start with some new staff and some staff updates. Welcome to our newest staff members. There's our Public Affairs Specialist Denise Tolliver, who is sitting in the back, who's in the room. Our Diversity Equity, uh, and Inclusion Officer Claritha Landry. Uh, and she's, I believe she's here in the room as well. She, I can't see probably. She's here in the room as well. And we have interviews for program analysts. This will be supporting our budget team. Uh, they begin this week, right? Um, second, we have additional space that's been granted. Uh, the Commission has been awarded some additional space twice, I mean, space within the current CAH building. Uh, the Grants Division will be relocating to that area, allowing for more working room for the staff. Uh, what this means to the public is that once you come to meet with your grant team, Grants Team, you have easier access to them. You get to come into the building, you'll check in, but you'll go immediately to the left, and your, your staff and your support will be right there. So, this is a, this is win for the community. Uh, we can clap for that, yes. This has been a, um, hard journey. Um, three, this is something that, this is, this next thing deals with the Council of Bids, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, of Planning and Economic Development. And this deals with something that we've heard of quite a deal from, uh, the community in our public comments. Um, uh... The Executive Director, Aaron Myers, I met with the members of the, uh, Council of Bids and the Deputy Mayor of Planning and Economic Development, Nina Albert, to discuss available opportunities to pair district creatives with vacant property owners. Uh, this partnership benefits both the artist and the property owners. Um, the artist will get much-needed space for performances, uh, gallery displays, and practice venues. Uh, and the property owners benefit by having some occup... somewhat occupying the space, who can assist with upkeep. And, uh, some owners will be able to avoid, uh, paying, uh, the vacant property tax. So, this has been an ongoing, uh, conversation, uh, and we are, will be preparing, uh, a survey uh, that will be requesting additional information, and this survey will be sent out to all of our grantees. We're asking all of our grantees who receive a survey to please complete and return the survey to CAH as soon as you receive it. And I really can't stress that enough. We're looking for this survey to go out in about two weeks. We're trying to do our due diligence to make sure that we're quantifying the questions in a way that we can both, uh, be helpful when we're speaking to landlords, uh, with pairing people up with the right matches, in a sense. So, those conversations, uh, can indeed happen. And this is a direct response to what we've heard from the public, but personally, as a, someone who's been an advocate in the city for a number of years, uh, at, with the leadership of our chair and, um, him being able to show, uh, in the, uh, community that there is a need to uplift this particular art form, this, uh, the arts here in Washington. I think this is the closest we've seen this government get behind, uh, moving space and using, uh, the creative economy as an economic driver for the city. So, that's an important thing. Number four, our Grant Fellowship Meetup. Now, we just heard about how successful our last meetup was. So, the Grant Fellowship Meetup that was held on Wednesday, November 7th, was a major success. We had more than 400 people who attended the event, who met with their CAH grant managers, commissioners, and grant awardees, and the networking opportunities were immeasurable. And we will be letting you all know when our upcoming, um, uh, meeting will be coming up. I think it's October 13th, 14th? December, I'm sorry, December 14th, 13th? 14th, there we go. December 14th, uh, and there's a space that is still yet to be determined. So, please put December 14th on your calendar. We will meet up again, and I'm tempted to make it an ugly sweater, uh, scenario, which I think would be beautiful for everybody, in a sense. I have a few I need to get out of the crate, you know? Number five, the new grant system payout. Now, this is probably one of the most important pieces of my report today. As of October 2nd, 2023, for FY 2024, the Notice of Grants Awards, that's NOGA, purchase orders, that's POS, were issued from the District Integrated Financial System, that's DIFs, and will no longer be issued from pass. Again, that will no longer be issued from pass. Because of this change, NOGA invoices for FY 2024 should be submitted via the DIF supplier portal, not in the DC vendor portal. Okay? This should be submitted in your DIF supplier portal, not your DC vendor portal. So, all of my grantees, you will not be able to use your muscle memory in this particular case. You're going to have to really pay close attention. Any invoices submitted via the NOGA portal that are not related to a Notice of Grant Awards purchase order, uh, that begins with the alphanumeric number P23, will be automatically rejected. Okay? So, any Notice of Grant Agreement purchase order that begins with, uh, with the alphanumeric number of P23 will be automatically rejected. So, to invoice for non-NOGA purchase orders that contains, uh, the PO prefix, prefix, use the DC vendor portal, and you can go to the, uh, vendorportal.dc.gov backslash account, I mean, front slash account, then front slash login. And this information will also be available on our website. Uh, to update any company information, which is very important because some of you have had some changes throughout the year, but, uh, between this award and your last award, uh, please go, please go to the CFO, CFO.dc.gov supplier portal and click on the existing supplier button. And for any questions, you may email suppliers@dc.gov. Again, that is suppliers@dc.gov, or call Monday through Friday from 8:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, And again, this information will be on our, uh, website. I know that doesn't sound all that, um, uh, fun, uh, but we have been assured by the CFO's office that this is a more streamlined system that we should be excited about. So, I, um, and if you notice by what I stated here, it kind of takes out an extra step, if I'm not mistaken. So, it goes straight to the source for you. So, you should be in a good, good sense. Only two more things left. Uh, our Grant Input email. CAH will be establishing an independent email to obtain grant ideas from the DC creative community. We are asking for the thoughts on our grant process, such as what parts of the creative community have the greatest need for grants and how CAH may improve its granting process. This information will be taken into consideration as we conduct our grant reassessment. So, we're now working with our OCTO, uh, partners here to create that email. And as soon as that email address is established, uh, we will be sending it out to all of our grantees and making it, uh, public. Um... We have some good news when it comes to, uh, Color the Curb. And I'm going to say some of this, I'm going to then, uh, kick it down to Lauren to give us a little update about this as well. Uh, but the request for applications will be live on the CAH website on November 21st, 2023. And this is for Color the, Color the Curb School Safety Program Request for Applications. The grant will be open until December 29th at 9:00 PM. The Color the Curb School Safety Program is a collaborative design and place-making project created through the, uh, through the partnership with the, uh, CAH, uh, District Department of Transportation, DDOT, and DC, uh, Public Schools, DCPS. This program aims to increase pedestrian safety by painting ground murals and curb extensions outside or near schools in Washington DC. For FY 24, the four, four awards at $30,000 each will be designated to four elementary schools. Ward One, this is going to be Cleveland Elementary. Uh, Ward Four, Whittier Elementary. Uh, Ward Five, is that Noyes Elementary? Noise Elementary? And then Ward Eight, Lecky Elementary. Lauren, would you say just a few more words about this, if you don't mind?
Um, my name is Lauren Dugas Glover, I'm the manager of the Public Art Department. I'm an African American woman wearing a peach-colored sweater. Um, thank you very much. This is, we're now in our third year of doing this partnership with DDOT and DC Public Schools, and it is a very engaging, um, process where the artists are actually working inside the schools with, with the young students and talking about, um, not only the history of their schools, but the history of their neighborhoods and how they would like to see the ground murals activated. It's been getting tremendous feedback, not only from the children because they are participating and creating the design, learning a little bit about being artists and learning about how you can make a living as a muralist, and it's also providing capacity building for muralists to learn about ground muraling, which is an up-and-coming and more popular, um, application of muraling, and it's very different. And so, we do provide technical, technical assistance for, um, muralists to learn how to paint on asphalt as well. So, uh, it also has been getting lots of positive response from the communities because they're seeing these flex posts, not just they're blocking access and protecting the curbs, but seeing some very beautiful art activated in that space.
That's wonderful. And lastly, uh, some of you got a chance to experience the Folk Life Presentation, uh, and, uh, want to congratulate Natalie Hopkins, uh, on, uh, the success of the Folk Life Presentation that was held on the 31st of October, and there was approximately 50 people in attendance. Um, and I'm very happy that the Commission is really taking on a posture to support, uh, the efforts of Folk Life here in the District of Columbia. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions from the Commissioners? If not, we'll move on to the Committee Reports. Kimber, Finance, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Kimber, I'm joining you guys virtually. Um, so just a quick update on Finance. The Commissioners, I'll have, you have a more detailed sort of update on the Finance Committee Report in your package. We did, uh, the Committee met on November 14th and had an opportunity to just get an update, um, from Brian on sort of where we are against our budget numbers. I think what's exciting is really, we've talked a lot about reigniting the conversation around, um, each of our committees going through a process to sort of better understand what would additional committee needs be potentially outside of the budget in the event there are additional resources or things kind of come back in that are not used during the, the grants process. So, we're going to be working individually with the committees around that, um, as we go forward and prepare and plan for the rest of the fiscal year. So, that's high level. I'm keeping it short and sweet tonight, and I know Brian is out. So, anything else, Reggie, you want to add on the Finance Committee?
No, I mean, to your point, nothing's really happened since the last time we reported, so I guess no...
It is not.
Any questions from the Commissioners? If not, thank you, Kimber. We'll go on to Gretchen.
Good evening, everyone. The Grants Committee...
The Grants Committee is very proud to not only present our report, but to ask for a vote by the full commission on giving you some money. I'm Gretchen Horton, I'm a black female with black glasses on tonight. And this is about the Capital Projects Grant specifically. In FY 24, we received 29 more applications than in FY 23. It's a 42% increase. For the third year in a row, the review required an additional panel. So for those of you out there who want to figure out how to get involved with the commission, please volunteer to be a panelist because we need you. Complete recommendation rationale will be now presented by Kevin Hasser and then will come back to me for the recommendation and the vote. Kevin?
Gretchen, I'll just say before we go on to that, let me repunctuate a 42% increase in our grants, applications. Now, that wasn't much fun for the grant managers who had to deal with that increase, but, but it really is evidence that more people are understanding that we're here, that there's real opportunities for them. There's excitement over applying because when I entered this job, there are those that just given up on trying to apply because they felt it was a black box and they'd never get anything. So congrats to the whole team, especially congrats and thanks to the grants team. Just wanted to punctuate that point. Kevin?
Thank you. Kevin?
Thank you so much. Yes, thank you for the introduction and thanks to the broader community too for submitting these really wonderful applications. My name is Kevin Hasser.
Excuse me, will you have your slides up, Kevin?
Oh. Maybe in the book, it's on the next page. I don't know if it's part of the same document that's on the screen. Well, I will just vamp. There it is. Look at that, I don't need to vamp at all, that's good.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Horton. As, as you indicated, I am Kevin Hasser. I am a Caucasian man with brown hair. I have a blue patterned shirt on, which one of my colleagues earlier today called my TV shirt for your benefit. So it is, it is my real pleasure to be the grants manager that works on this Capital Projects Grant opportunity. And so I'm really excited to present these recommendations to you all today. For those of you who are in person, it should be in your binder. For those of you who are joining us virtually, it should be on screen. And, and hopefully you'll be able to follow along. For what the Capital Projects Grant is, you can read the, the grant program description here. It is the, it is our grant, is a commission's grant to support organizations that rent or own facilities, that intend to own facilities, or that seek capital project support for permanent property, technology, equipment, et cetera, all in support of the broader arts and humanities within the District of Columbia. This is really our grant opportunity, and I say this to the applicants. This is really our grant opportunity that focuses on capital projects. Obviously, it's in the name and also capital purchases as well. It has been for a variety, for a number of years. For those folks that did apply, if they were seeking a project of greater than $100,000, there is still a match component. This is the only program that we offer that has a match component still. And that is a point of equity in order to greater distribute funds among a wider field of potential applicants. I'm going to ad lib just for a second here because I think the capital projects are, are particularly important in this time. Otherwise, if these funds were not distributed to these very worthy organizations, the same organizations would have to take funds away from the general operating support in order to fund these projects. These are necessary projects. And I feel fortunate to work for a city where the mayor and our elected officials understand the value of this program. So ad lib aside, it is, it's a sincere pleasure to work on this. You can look at the numbers here for the recommended award allocation. We'll cut to the chase for the current year. For FY 24, we are hoping to make awards, we're recommending awards that total to $6,271,805. That would manifest into 67 awards, which replicants, which represents rather 68% of the applicant pool. And we do include the prior three fiscal years for reference here because you can see all numbers are increasing, budget size is increasing, but so too are the awards. And if you look down through the application and is referenced by Commissioner Horton earlier, the applicant pool itself is increasing too. This is a growing program, it is a popular program, people find a need in this program. And so again, it's been, it has been a lot of work getting to this point, but it's been, it's been a labor of love. The number of panels were six. And I believe the commissioner has already addressed the, the primary highlights here, not just in the increase in the number of applicants, the increase in the number of panels. And yes, please do, if you're interested, sign up to be a panelist. I'm looking at you with the camera. It's not volunteer anymore, we do offer a stipend, so consider that for next year. And then also notably, the average project size increased for the first time in four years. We did make a subtle change to the match requirements to alleviate some of the pressure and acknowledgement of the increase of expenses, both due to inflation and labor and everything else. It's gotten more expensive over the last several years. And that was based exclusively on feedback from the community. The applicants here, there were 98 that ultimately went to panel. And of course, we include the, the prior few years again there for reference. Of those 98, eight are brand new applicants to the Commission for the Arts and Humanities. This is their first year applying for a project support from us, so we're glad that they applied. 27 applied to this program for the first time. One of them withdrew their application and seven were deemed ineligible to proceed to panel for the reasons that are listed below, primarily, well, exclusively because they didn't meet the, the criteria for, for consideration. They didn't own the, or lease the property for which they were applying. They were seeking funds for programming support instead of a capital project. They sought funding that was duplicative to a prior year. They were out of compliance with the commission. Or they were applying in support of a space that was not actually an arts and humanities space. Aside from that, other program updates, I made reference to a couple of these things earlier. One thing I haven't mentioned is that this program, although we have been offering this program for a number of years, we did change the name this year. Prior years, people will probably be familiar with this, referred to as the Facilities and Buildings or FAB Award. But for many years, this program has funded projects that were not necessarily strictly facilities and buildings linked. And so we thought this was a much more inclusive name. There was a question that for the, for the panelist evaluation that dealt with historically underserved communities that the panelists wrangled with over the last several years. And based on their feedback, we decided to remove. And then digital projects, which we made eligible during the pandemic years, were restructured to alleviate applicants for the unique nature of those projects. Before we go into the next panel, I think it might benefit everybody to advance to the, to the chart on the third page of the breakdown here. And this is an overview of the manifestation of these awards. And I can sort of walk through it with everybody, starting with the left-hand column that's appearing on your screen or in the, in the printout there. How we came to these funding conclusions is that we applied, first of all, we divided all the applicants. It is impossible for somebody, except for myself, to read through all 98 applications. And so we divided them into those six panels. Then the panelists digested each one of those panels. Each, this formula was applied to each one of these six panels equally. And the way it is generally structured here, as you see in the left-hand column, is that the top scoring applicant, which is at the 100th percentile minimum, would have received 95% of their award that impacted six applicants. And then it scales down from there. If they were at the 90th percentile within their cohort, second or third place typically, then we're recommending that they receive 90% of what they had requested. Moving over into the next columns on the right, the ones that are headed with applicant, requested and awardees. This is our word by word breakdown, just in full transparency, so that everyone can see how many applicants we received from each ward and how much in total they were requesting and what that percentage looks like relative to the rest of the city. You'll see that in total, there were just about $11.5 million requested from these, from this applicant pool of 98. And we are recommending funding of 6.2, which is, we, we squeezed the budget as much as we could to accommodate that, that amount. And then the awardees column as well. That too is, is linked to the, the ward referenced as well. So you can see that Ward one, for instance, there were 17 applicants. We are recommending 13 awarded. And then you can read down from there. I included some historic information as well. If you look at the bottom, you'll see the prior year's data for reference, that little orange box. It says the total number of last year's requests was 69. Again, that is 69 relative to 98. And the total awards that we issued last year were 56 relative to what we are recommending this year for 67. So again, all numbers are going up based on the, the need for these funds. You can flip back to the, to the prior page, give you a second. Excellent. A couple of highlights from the panels, we can't show everything, of course, because some of this is sensitive information. But for Panel one, because I said that we were breaking things down according to each one of the six, we're recommending funding 10 of the 16 applicants. Very notably here, only one of the 10 recommended grantees have received a prior Capital Projects or Facilities and Buildings Award. We welcome everybody to apply for this program and it's very exciting to fund new applicants each year. For Panel two, we're recommending the funding of 12 of the 17 applicants. Notable here is that one of the grantees that we are recommending for funding is an organization that is purchasing a permanent home, which will hopefully increase their stability. Panel three, the story is similar. We are recommending the funding of 12 of 17 applicants. And that panel as well also had an applicant that we were recommending their purchase of real estate property in the city. Panel four, we're recommending the fund of 11 of the 15 applicants. Panel five, we're recommending funding 11 of 16 applicants. And then Panel six, we are recommending funding 11 of the 17 applicants in that pool. And then there's a summary there below of the, of the funding formula once again, for everybody's clarification. Because things don't always line up with the math, we also, in instances where the panelists themselves gave scores that were very close to a tie, we were looking at that asterisk down at the bottom. We looked at 20% of the variance of that average variance between rankings and decided to be more generous to those applicants as well. And that affected two, two as well. We hope to be more inclusive rather than exclusive. So that is how we came to these numbers that I am presenting to you today.
Thank you so much, Kevin. This was a tremendous amount of work on your part. And thanks to the leadership of Terrell Johnson, who is the senior grants manager there. Again, because you can see how much work this entailed and how many panels were involved. For those of you in the audience who want to be more involved and who want to understand how awards are actually made, please volunteer to be a panelist. We don't make these decisions, our panelists do. So we really need your input and your assistance on this. Are there any questions, first of all? Okay. The Grants Committee met on November 16th. And our recommendations for capital projects is that we fund 67 eligible FY 2024 Capital Projects applicants for a total of $6,271,805. The Grants Committee unanimously voted on this and voted positively on this. So the committee is recommending the adoption of the, of a, excuse me, the following resolution. Resolve that the commission agreed to the committee's recommendation to fund 67 eligible applications for FY 24 Capital Projects applicants at an amount of $6,271,805. I'd like to make the motion to move.
Good. I'll call the roll. If you're in favor of the resolution, say aye, oppose no, or abstain. Carla Sims? Are you with it?
I, I, I'm sorry, had a hard time getting to the.
Thank you, Cicely?
Aye.
Chase?
Aye.
Cora? Gretchen?
Aye.
Hector? Julianne?
Aye.
Kimber?
Aye.
Natalie? It passes, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. We're going to do our best to get these, this money out as soon as we can. As many of you know, we do have some issues getting money through the systems that we have to deal with. So be patient with us. And if you have any critical questions, please call the grants manager on that. The other thing that we did at our meeting was we had something called Grants Revamp. This is the second time we've done this. And what we basically do is have the grants manager sit around and present their grants. Each of them presents their grants, they talk about what's right, what's wrong, what needs to be done. They talk about recommendations that they've gotten from panelists. And we do take those recommendations very seriously. We reviewed the 2022 suggestions and outcomes. We actually were very pleased that we had 87% of implement, 87% implementation reached on the suggestions and the outcomes from Revamp 2022. Very pleased with that. Discuss staggering the release of grant funding to award throughout the year and not all in October. Many, many reasons behind this. First of all, we have so many of our grants that are paneled and awarded in the summer. And so many of our programs, especially PEF, Performance Events and Festivals happens during the summer. And people really need to know how much money they're going to have and trying to receive that money beforehand. So we're looking at trying to stagger the release of our grant funding throughout the year. We analyzed ward funding and grants budgets for, for the past three years. And we've looked at grant by grant, ward by ward, how many grants were actually distributed in those wards. And we were really, really pleased to see that many of our diversity and equity targets that were formulated during our meeting about a year and a half ago, I think, have been met. There's much more work to do and we're ready to do it. All, we're exploring new grant management systems that allow for a paperless grant process. This is my hot button, so folks, we're going to do this one. We are going to figure this out. It is not going to be easy. We're going to get a benchmark system that will allow much more technology and new technology to be used within our grants process so that everything will work much more smoothly. This is not an overnight process, as many of you know, who have worked with any technology. We're talking a year and a half out, but we're starting it now and we're going to finish it. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening and a great holiday.
You, Gretchen, thank you, the Grants Committee. Great work. Let's move into the 21st century. Governance, Julianne?
Good evening, I'm Julianne Brienza. I am an Italian-American, third generation district resident serving on the commission. And I'm wearing a brown sweater. And I am the chair of the Governance Committee and we met on November 13th for the first time. And our initial task that we are going to do this year is to draft a Commissioner Board Job Description for inclusion into the staff created and maintained Quick Reference Guide for Commissioners. The committee, meaning the Governance Committee, will periodically review and update this job description for commissioners. And the commission staff will edit the description as needed with the committee's approval. The purpose of this description is to really just facilitate the welcoming of new members by providing a comprehensive and concise outline of our commitment and service that we provide. We will, the committee being Chase and Natalie and I will draft this and have it for review at the March 18th meeting for approval. And then, you know, we'll have a description. That is our, that is our initial task for this year. We look forward to having further updates on our initiatives. And we have our dates for meetings in the report. So I guess if any other commissioners want to join, feel free. Governance can be exciting. Thank you.
Thank you. Julianne certainly has made governance exciting, so thank you, thank you so much. Arts Education Report, Hector is not here, but Andrea Brown is going to present, as I understand it. Andrea?
Yes, that's correct. Can you all hear me fine? All right, awesome. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Brown, I'm the Arts Learning Coordinator. I'm an African American woman wearing a black sweater. The Arts Education Department consists of myself and Marcia Howard, who is the Arts Learning Specialist. So we are thrilled to announce that on October 4th, we provided grants, 31 grants for Arts Humanities Education Projects, 18 Philotrip Experience Awards, 35 Arts Humanities Fellowship Program Awards, and a combination of 47 General Operating Support Awards as well. Awards as well between myself and Marcia. Poetry Out Loud and Words on Fire is a national poetry competition that takes place every year. It is sponsored by the National Endowment for the Arts and the National Poetry Foundation. And each year, we send teaching artists into participating high schools to prepare students for competitions. Seventeen schools that express interest and fifteen-plus teaching artists. And also Celebrate the Creative Spark is a three-lesson plan residency for school-aged students to take part in a range of art disciplines provided by teaching artists. And this year, we're looking at expanding that programming for older adults, and planning is underway. And then lastly, National Assembly of State Art Agencies Professional Development is held each year for Arts Learning Coordinators and Managers, and this year it took place in Salt Lake City, Utah. Sadly, that's why I was not able to be with, with my grantees for the fellowship meetup, but next year. And so this year, we, we talked about a number of different topics, anything, everything from equity and grant making to leveraging opportunities, opportunities for teaching artists. And that's all for Arts Education. Thank you all.
Questions, comments? Thank you, Andrea. So at our last meeting, we voted on and approved the creation of two special committees. One, for lack of a better labeling of it, an Art Week DC Committee that would investigate and help us create by twenty-twenty-five an international arts fair in Washington, DC. The second special committee was around the creation of a foundation, and again, for lack of any other term, I would call it the DC Arts Foundation for now, that would address concern we continue here in the community for the need for an ability for small organizations that for whatever reason do not have a five oh one C three and therefore cannot get tax deductible donations to have a foundation that would serve as a physical sponsor focused on DC organizations to provide that ability for them to get those sort of funds, as well as to raise money above and beyond what the Arts Commission could do and to address those people that the Arts Commission can't. Again, I'll just repeat, the intention of this foundation is not to duplicate or cannibalize that which the commission can do, but rather to do those things the commission cannot do. I want to report on the Art Week DC Committee, which I will be chairing, and I'm going to ask Chase in a few minutes to talk about the DC Arts Foundation Committee that we've created. As we ventured into this notion of what might an international arts festival in Washington, DC look like on an annual basis? As we looked at other successful international arts festivals, one strong piece of advice they had was you've got to do a lot more community engagement and community investigation than they did. We've now had two, what we call stakeholder meetings. We've had some eighty organizations across Washington, DC, arts organizations, to come to us and have a full discussion. It would break out groups to really talk about what might this be? What are the issues? What do we need to address? And as we get this input, we are churning through to move to what the solution might be. We have an upcoming stakeholder meeting that is focused on artists, without it is important to focus on artists. And I hear that we have a waitlist now, and we had some sixty spots maybe, but they're built so large, except that does not mean don't apply. Please let us, if you're interested, because, I'm sorry. Yeah, it'll be the first of many, but also some people drop off. So get on the waitlist. You may be able to clear. But I think that the attendance we had at the first two meetings and this waitlist situation on this third meeting is again, evidence of the, at least the interest in the notion of doing something like this. There's some trepidation. There are some things we need to be aware of and concerned about, but please bring us all of that input so that we can come up with a solution that really works and addresses any sort of issues that we may feel would be issues for us. Last year, I took a delegation from the mayor's office and from the Arts Commission to the Miami Arts Basel. This year, the commission has delegated six people to attend Art Basel Miami to learn the city's response to Art Week Miami and Art Basel. For any artists out there, this is for people listening now, any artists who also plan to attend this event, please reach out to our office. Andrew Jacobson will be your contact person there. This will allow you to attend any events that CAH may be producing while you're there. Additionally, there will be a post-Art Basel debriefing meeting for those who attended and who are also interested in international art. So any artists out there, if you're planning to go to Art Basel, let us know. We're planning an event while we're there. We'd like to invite you to it, and certainly those who attended to participate in this debriefing that we hope to do afterwards. Our goal is to learn the good, bad, and ugly of all the international arts festivals and create the best one for Washington, DC as we can possibly do. Questions, comments from the commissioners on where we are on this? If not, I'll turn it over to Chase, who'll talk about what I'm calling DC Arts Foundation.
Thank you, Reggie. My name is Chase Maggiano, and like Julianne, I am also an Italian-American. I learn something new every day about you. I am a white male with brown hair, wearing a blue sweater and glasses. After discussions with staff, other commissioners, and community members, I am extremely pleased to be chairing a new ad hoc committee, which will be facilitating the creation of a new Community Arts Foundation, as Reggie briefly described. We have heard about this effort for nearly a year, and we are approaching some more formal determinations now, obviously including the establishment of this committee. There are still some questions to answer, and I'm on those. And I've already been connecting with similar entities in other fields to learn best practices and creation histories. Meanwhile, I can share that there is strong support for this effort, and I suspect we will find some pleasant surprises as we formulate the structure and support for this aligned foundation. I also firmly believe personally that one of the outcomes will be to make the work of CAH easier and more productive. Another thing I believe very personally, having been involved in arts management and funding in DC for over a decade, is that I have seen firsthand that all ships rise together, and I'm excited to get to help facilitate a new entity whose work will align with CAH. I do look forward to working with all of you, with the community, and would gladly take any questions now, although we'll let you know, we probably have a lot more questions than answers today.
Questions, anyone? I will add that we've met with a number of the council members, and so far, not a person has been negative on the notion of foundation. Many have questions, things have to be worked out, but there is general and strong support of us doing something like this. We just have to figure out what's the best way to do it. And with Chase's leadership, I am confident that we will have an amazing product. Thank you. The only unfinished business I had on the agenda. Okay. The only unfinished business is we were going to review and confirm our schedule of meetings for FY twenty-four, but nothing has changed. So we'll just be repeating what was said before. So that stayed the same. And I'm to remind the commissioners of their conflict of interest statements that there are only a few stragglers who haven't gotten theirs in yet, but we'll do that. We'll get that in so we'll be squeak and clean over conflicts of interest as well. Only two or three people are still remaining. Do we have any new business? There'll be no further business. The next meeting of the commission will be held on Monday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty PM. The time is now six thirty PM, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.